Recording in progress.
I'll call to order the Tuesday, October 11th, 2022 Town Council Committee of the Whole to order at 6:37. All councilors are present. Calendar and Communications, Councilor Baumgartner.
Good evening, everyone. Received communications regarding Branford Manor. Also received communications regarding short-term rentals as well as Mystic Education Center. Thank you.
Councilor Parker?
I attended, I missed an event that I did attend, the Community Speaks Out softball tournament. I did attend and finished negotiations with the Board of Ed for, they'll be coming forth to, once they ratify everything, to the council, emails, correspondence from everyone regarding different items, and that's all.
Council Franco?
Thank you. I had many communications and conversations, as well as worked on a planting at the roundabouts on Indian Field Road with Council Jones this past Monday, and that's it. Thanks.
Council Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Received the same emails that other councilors have, and thank you to Council Franco for inviting me over to help her with the beautification committee and some plantings. It was a lot of fun. We had a good time. Thank you.
Council McBride?
Thank you. I also received the same communication other councilors received on the various topics. Also held a Property Reuse Committee meeting last Wednesday with Council Borlon and Council Westervelt. And our next meeting is next Wednesday, the 19th. We are taking the comments that we've received in the last few weeks and we're coming up with a draft document for review at that Wednesday meeting. So if anything will be posted before, if anyone has any comments on that document, please feel free to send them. We'll begin to incorporate them and encourage anyone to attend that meeting as well. Thank you.
Council Borlon?
Thank you. I too attended the Property Reuse Committee as discussed by Council McBride, and again, as well, like as he stated, I encourage anybody with any additions or any suggestions. We always have public comment available, so your voices are welcome. Please show up, get involved. Also, it was stated that there's a chance that they're going to be adding in some citizens from the community. So if you're interested in being part of the Property Reuse Committee, I encourage you to reach out and let us know to the Chair of the Committee, Councilor McBride. I attended a Fitch High School marching band competition on Friday at NFA where the Fitch High School students performed wonderfully, and it was a great experience, followed by enrichment on Saturday at UMass Amherst where they got to compete with over 2,000 marching band high school members. It was amazing to see the amount of high schools coming together and performing. Every year, there's a different theme. This year, it was High School Musical. These students worked really hard to perform three, I think it was three songs in such a short time. I did watch it live. I was not able to attend, but from what I saw, it was quite amazing. I also was in Branford Manor on Thursday. I got invited down by a tenant, or tenants, to see different properties, as well as look through some of the buildings with the different mold conditions, repair conditions. I was overwhelmed, and it's an understatement to say that I could not breathe. When I was down there in Unit 155, this was a unit that was a year ago, or a year and a half ago, a tenant was moved out of there. It's heavily documented in the city documents with mold, and then in a short time after that, they moved a new resident in there. I cannot state that she died from the mold, but the resident in that unit has passed of suspicious bacterias and other concerns. I was down at that unit on, I believe it was Thursday. The town manager, John Burt, was present along with the City Mayor, Keith Hendrick, and I left there myself with a headache and tightness in my chest, and I'll let John, the town manager, speak about his own experience when he's up. At that time, I met some other residents down there. The neighbor that adjoins there also had a spot on her ceiling leaking, and I was overcome with emotion when I went in there and the kid looked at me and said, you know, he related to me and said, "Oh, you're so-and-so's mother." And, you know, not to say that it hasn't hit me as a former resident of Branford Manor over 20 years ago. It really hit me when I went around his house to see the conditions. My concern is how come all of the units in Building 18 have not been considered condemned at this point and shut down until an investigation is done? I am concerned that there's women and children in there. One of the residents, two doors down from the same unit, stated that she had to get a 24-hour breathing treatment and she was hospitalized. She has three children in that home as well, and the list continues. I don't know what to do. After leaving there, there was a peaceful protest that I attended on Friday in which about 15 to 20 rotating residents came out on a short notice just to voice their concerns, and the mother of the woman that passed was so thankful that we had put that on as a send-off to her to let her know that no matter what the condition that her daughter had passed from, we will not give up until we find out what the answers are, and it was just absolutely crazy. On that same day, one of the tenants also invited me to attend one of their units that in which they stated was refurbished and ready to go. Upon arrival, we walked through, we opened up the access panel, walked around, and one of the overwhelming similarities of all the problems of every unit is bath fitters came in, or a company like Bath Fitters put something over the existing tubs. There's a space between the tubs which with weight and time breaks down and cracks, and then water seeps it. And as a result, what they've been doing is coming through with putty or some white substance and putting it over the hole, which then it breaks down, and if you press on it, you get a noise like, which is water between the tubs. In this refurbished unit that I witnessed with my own eyes after I was invited to come down, I said, "There's a hole in the tub, or is that a cigarette burn?" I asked the person. He looked. He said, "I don't know." Pushed it. Water sprouted right up, nearly hit me in my eye, and he's like, "Oh," and the person that was there, I believe, probably rejected the unit. I'm concerned if that's a repaired unit, it's not passing the sniff test for me. I'm, also while down there, when we finished touring this unit, someone asked me to come see their unit. They were ripping wet drywall, and let me just state for the record, the setup of these apartments, to access any basement in these units, you have to go through their kitchen. There's no, there's no, what is that called, a bulkhead. I walked over, there's all this, I took pictures, and there's all this wet, wet brown, black stuff in bags that weren't fully closed when walking out of the building. They piled them all up, and I said, "Where's your negative pressure? Where is the tarps separating it?" The attorney happened to be down there as well, and I called the building inspector for the city and asked if he could come down and investigate. Residents were going to be returning home to this. Nothing was covered. The door was wide open. You could see all of this. No plastic, no tunneling, no negative pressure was set up, nothing. Guys were walking, and women, in contamination suits right through people's kitchen tables. No notice explaining the hazard of the return, and the air quality tests not necessarily being done at that time. Residents overwhelmingly outside spoke about the quality of the air that they were feeling by just walking out of their door. That's a concern, and I don't know how much more I can do, but continue to go down there, witness what they're seeing with my own eyes. That's what I was elected to do. I also received a comment from, well, I didn't receive it, but someone sent it to me that was posted, and it was stating that I was overreaching. The mayor of the city, Keith Hendrick, states, "I will not reply since Portia has me blocked." I wonder why? What happened? You got, you got to the State Housing Authority. Branford is not responding. Finding Ledge Light and, you know, blah blah. Secondly, Portia is overstepping her authority. I'm overstepping my authority and never proactively reached out.
Council Borlon?
Well, this is a communication, and I have more.
Council Borlon, Council Borlon. Thank you. What's your point of order?
Point of order is, this is calendar communications, and she's also reading other comments from other sources, and also in Robert's Rules of Order, if you're going to read comments from other sources, you have to have the approval of the council to do so. That's true.
Excuse me, can you please speak louder? Can you speak louder and clearer?
We have, we're working on the audio issues, so my understanding is that there's some Robert's Rule. I'm not familiar with that. Do you, Attorney Duggan, are you familiar?
No, I'm not specifically.
Okay.
Continue.
Hold on. Okay. I will say that this is for Calendar and Communications. We do have a three-minute time limit that generally, let me finish, that generally does not take place on Calendar and Communications, but if it's going to be something where this is going to be 10 minutes, I'm going to have to just put the three-minute time limit on.
Sure. I'm welcome to that. I mean, if you guys put it on everything else, so, these are my communications.
Point of order.
These are my communications.
What's your point of order?
Decorum issues on response to your comments.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's well, let me, let me just rule.
Sure.
Okay. The point of order is well taken. Just please, just, just continue with your calendar communications. Do not speak back and forth about, you know, councilors and what they're trying and trying not to do. Just, just.
I'm speaking that there's constant, not from any particular council, but the rules are a problem.
Okay. You have the floor.
And saying I'm overreaching, overstepping. If going down and going into these units, if they have to live in it, and I have the right, and they're bringing me into it to see it and feel the experience that they are feeling and living every night, that's my right to do that, and if that's overstepping, well, damn it, I will continue to overstep. I think it's also important that we speak about a referral that has come through, that a request to, basically, it sounds like probably it's in link with the overstepping. I don't know what the intentions are, but another rule referral. John, will you be reading that referral tonight?
I don't read referrals.
Okay, well, then I'll read it then, because it's communication that came in my email. Basically saying there's a referral here that I would, it's from Council Franco. "Good morning, Mayor." This is on Saturday after the protest. "I would like to make a referral and have a presentation on the responsibilities of a town counselor, which should include but not limited to the responsibilities of laws, town charter, Robert's Rules of Order, which was just brought up tonight. I also request an additional presentation with a question and answer from Tom Hennig regarding freedom of information laws." Again, to me, what's the concern? If there's nothing to hide, why are we keep making these rules or trying to pass things through to make it so people can't speak? If you think I'm overreaching, I will continue to overreach because that's my job as a counselor. That's all I have for communications tonight, and again, I want to say I stand with Branford Manor, the MOSA, RSPL, data centers, and anything else in this town where people feel that their voice needs to be heard, I will speak up. And if I don't get reelected because I don't have decorum, or I don't have, I have overreach, well, then that will be the voter's decision, not the council. Thank you.
Point of order.
Okay, so hold on one second.
Point of order.
What's your point of order?
I am being specifically yelled at by another counselor, and her decorum, this is inappropriate. It is constant. If she wants to break the laws and break the rules and talk about transparency and then not be transparent, that's on her. But I'm asking for them to come, and I have a right to now respond to you, because you did direct it at me specifically, which you're not supposed to direct comments specifically at other counselors. Again, breaking the rules as you consistently do.
I heard your point of order.
Can I call a point of order, please?
No, Council Borlon.
Oh, I can't call a point of order.
She's in a point of order.
Oh, may I call it next?
She's in a point of order.
He hasn't ruled.
Sure.
Okay. That comment was directed.
Again, you don't have the floor.
That comment was directed specifically at Council Franco. Please do not direct comments directly at other councilors, okay? So, just to be clear, that referral was for a refresher of the rules, like we've done at the beginning of other terms. There was no changing of rules in that referral, just to be clear. Council Westervelt, you have the floor.
Point of order.
What's your point of order?
I read a referral that Council Franco sent.
That's not a point of order.
I'm clarifying my point of order, and to say that I'm attacking her and yelling at her because I'm, I speak passionately is not fair. I spoke the same tone when I spoke about Branford Manor.
Council Borlon, that's not a point of order.
That's not fair to say.
Council Borlon, you are out of order.
I find offense to calling that I'm yelling at her.
Council Borlon, that is not a point of order.
Yes, it is a point of order. It's a decorum. I ask for decorum.
Council Westervelt, you have the floor.
And it is a rule change request, and it's not the beginning of the term.
Council Westervelt, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have received much the same communications that everyone else has for also the, or excuse me, for the Mystic Educational Center as well as Branford Manor, and the rules that we talked about last week. I've also received a copy of a letter written to our, our state senator, Heather Summers, regarding the Branford Manor situation, and her request of our federal representatives and senators to find, to audit the housing and urban development for the money spent in pursuit of what's going on at Branford Manor. I can make that available as well, but, and that's all I have for now.
Council Cassiri?
Good evening, everyone. This week, I watched the Groton RTM Finance Committee meeting and the Property Reuse Committee. I have received various emails and correspondences regarding the Mystic Education Center, Branford Manor, the NAACP, the award ceremony for the members of the Groton Police Department who were awarded the U.S. Attorney's Office Award. Voter district information will be posted in Spanish on the website, an invitation to the Historical Society fundraiser and art show, which is on October 21st at 6:00 p.m. at the Latham Chester Store in Noank, an invitation to the Mystic Vascular Bridge on October 15th at Mystic River Park at 2:00 p.m., short-term rentals, and information regarding a CHRO complaint. Thank you.
Thank you. As we all know, there's some residents of Branford that are currently displaced. They're living in hotels, and it's come to my attention that the funding from Related may be running out at some point, so I'm referring to the next council, a vote on setting up a fund that the town manager can use to cover costs for Branford residents, but not only Branford residents, any displaced residents in town to help cover these costs. I think this is essential, obviously, because of the circumstances we have now, but I think it's just good to have a fund set up so that if anything arises, the town manager has the ability to assist. So that will be showing up on our next cow, but other than that, I have nothing. Approval of minutes?
I have another thing to add, if I may.
Council Borlon?
I just want to also say that I did receive a phone call back from the Attorney General. He's calling me this week to speak with me at great length when he has time, so I just wanted to add that as a correspondence as well, as we received a, something from the town manager through the attorney for Branford regarding the mold levels in 155. In the report that I read that was sent to us this afternoon, what I'm hearing, it was the highest level of mold that this guy who does, and I don't want to speak off, but what my understanding is, it was the highest level of mold that he has received in, you know, when doing this, and even in some of the ones that were reported that had a large amount of visible mold, even though they had toxic levels, my understanding, these levels were higher, and it was the black mold, which was the most toxic in Building 18 in 155, which is why I think we should be urging to get those residents replaced immediately.
Thank you.
Are you going to be reporting about that tonight, John, and all?
I'm, uh.
The report?
I don't have it with me, and.
It's in an email.
Mold standards, you know, it's very difficult, sorry. And I do have, I do have those Steve Matts bills that's going to be here for it. And just, I looked up the FOIA rules. This should probably be moved and only done under the actual agenda item. Essentially, you can ask simple questions when it's not on the agenda. If, if it gets into opinion, or if it gets into cross-talk, it has to be on the agenda or else suspended or lost by two-thirds. So that's, so this is better suited for the actual agenda item.
Okay, so thank you. So on to the approval of minutes. I make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of September 27th, 2022, so move.
Second, Cassiri.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Cassiri. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. Carers unanimously, nine in favors, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto new business. Branford Manor Tax Incentive Agreement. Council Cassiri?
I hereby move that the Town Council Committee of the Whole find Branford Manor Preservation Limited Partnership in default of the agreement for the improvement and operation of a low-income subsidized rental housing complex entered into by and between the Town of Groton, City of Groton, and Branford Manor Preservation Limited Partnership in 2017. This action is taken pursuant to paragraphs B.2 subsection G, B.7 subsection A, subsection I, I, and any other relevant paragraphs of that agreement, and is supported by the following. Since on or about September 8th, 2022, Legelite Health District has issued at least 16 public health orders attached identifying violations of the State Public Health Code at Branford Manor, which to date have not all been cured, and Legelite is continuing to address complaints and inspect the premises for potential additional violation of the State Public Health Code. And since on or about September 26th, 2022, the City of Groton has issued numerous violations of its rental housing code at Branford Manor, which to date have not all been cured, and the city continues to address complaints and inspect the premises for potential additional violations of the rental housing code. This action is taken without prejudice to the town's ability in the future to modify the reasons and/or support for, or lack of reasons and/or support for, any ongoing default through addition, modification, or withdrawal of reasons or support. Said default pursuant to paragraph B.7 subsection C is subject to a cure period which is set at 60 days, beginning from the compliance date set forth by the city and/or Legelite Health District, as those compliance dates may be amended from time to time. In the event of further notices of violation from the rental housing code and/or public health code, the town may amend, if necessary, the default reasons, support, and/or cure periods consistent with the agreement. I so move.
Second.
Second, Borlon.
Moved by Cassiri, seconded by Melendez.
Council Borlon?
Great. I'm concerned that this is far too late. I know that myself and another counselor, Council Baumgartner, at the very beginning asked for default way back when this came to us. It's a great step forward, but we have many steps to go. This is just a small thing that is cutting the money possibly in the end if they do not create this. I am concerned, why are we giving them 60 days? They've already had five months. Actually, they've had five years, and 18 point something, I mean, 55 came from, I mean, they had a ton of money. $42,000 was supposedly spent per unit. There's no way that people would be having these many, much mold concerns, and it's not just mold. Falling downstairs, concussions have occurred from improper stairs, injuries to children, inhabitable conditions, rails, tubs, unusable today. We've had dark water. They are cutting off pipes, no water pressure, with no notice. 60 days? What are our other options? Can we speak to the attorney, John?
I will invite her up at this time.
Good evening, everybody. With regard to the time period, there's a specific cure section in the agreement itself under paragraph 7, sub-paragraph C, and there's a reference to the fact that it can be no less than 30 days that you provide the Related. However, it also has to be taken in consideration as to whether or not the entity is diligently pursuing such cure and such default is not capable of being cured in such time period. So you're dealing with some very serious issues as outlined in Legelite's orders. Those orders in specific have allowed for them for at least 30 days. It's likely, I would say, that Legelite would provide them with additional time under their own orders, so they'll be considering that. But the significance of the issues, as you've all described, is big. It's serious. It's not really necessarily capable of being cured within those specific timeframes, like a 30-day timeframe, and the town does have to provide them with enough time for which it's capable of being, being cured. So, and looking at this and saying, I think the 60 days that are outlined in your motion, that's a, it's a starting point. It could be something where you might look at it and amend it later on. You might amend it to something, you know, broader. I doubt it would be ratcheted back, but that's not, you know, a foregone conclusion. But again, you have to comply with what the, what the agreement itself offers.
Thank you for that. I would like to make a motion to amend this, and the only language I'd like to change is 30 days, to 30 days from 60.
Second.
Okay, I got an amended motion for 30 days rather than 60 by Council Borlon, seconded by Council Baumgartner.
I have the floor.
Thank you. As it was stated, they've had months. They've had five years. They've been given millions of dollars. People are suffering. I suffered while I was down there, breathing it in. How embarrassing that I have to tell people, could you step outside? Because I was overcome with the, with the burden in my own lungs. 30 days it is. If that's the minimum, that's what they should get. Changing this only stops the tax abatement, which in my opinion, I'll speak as a sole counselor, I felt was a bad deal to begin with. We should not be abating taxes for billionaires. This does not change the fact that they're going to actually comply in 60 days. Put the pressure on now. Let's put the 30 on, and let's get out of this. Why does anybody suffer any longer? That's my reason. They've had long enough, and if we actually cared, we'd be putting some teeth into this, and 30 days means something. That's what I want to walk away with. I will not, not support 60. These, these families have been waiting. They came before this council five months ago. People rolled their eyes, tried to cut down their time to speak, and now we're getting into, we're going to put a, put a, put them in, you know, deferment of the money. It's sad. The money is one part. Let's take that money back and help these families, but in the other part is, that doesn't change the conditions of the buildings, no matter what timestamp we put on it. They've had the time. Where's the money? Where did the money go? So I encourage my councilors to help support these family members, including children, which I find this to be child neglect. Children. How come nobody's called DCF on Related? They can't breathe. If I lived in these conditions with my own children, it's negligence.
Council's time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Council Baumgartner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been 139 days since I submitted the referral on May 25th to call Branford Manor, specifically Related companies in default of the 30-year tax stabilization agreement. In my humble opinion, 60 days is far too long. Related has already had 139 days since each and every one of you in the audience have opened up your homes to us councilors, to people in the community who stand with you, and since then, the conditions have not improved, if not gotten worse. As Council Borlon stated, Related is owned by a billionaire, a billionaire that owns a football team down in Florida. The mere fact that we actually forgive nearly a half a million dollars in taxes every year to billionaires is absolutely deplorable, considering the living conditions that too many families in Branford have been subjected to, not just this year, not just last year, not just the last five years, 10 years, but for the lifetimes of so many families living in Branford. It's criminal. It's criminal. It's criminal. I've said it time and time again, and the more we, we realize to what extent each and every unit has mold, has health and, health and safety hazards, we will realize that it may be too late. As Council Borlon had stated earlier, it was too late for so many individuals who have suffered, their health has suffered as a result of these deplorable conditions. People have lost their lives because of the conditions in these homes. So, all I can say is thank you. Thank you to every single mother, aunt, grandmother who has come to our council meetings since May, sharing your stories, and I'm embarrassed. I'm embarrassed. May, sharing your stories, and I'm embarrassed, I'm embarrassed for the Town of Groton, I'm embarrassed for all of us to have allowed you to live in these conditions for so long. It isn't right. No child should have to be subjected to that. No senior citizen in our community should be subjected to that. So I ask each and every council here respectfully, we have heard the cries of each and every Branford tenant over the last few months. We've given them, we've given Related one hundred and thirty-nine days already to cure these issues, and they haven't. Why should they be afforded sixty days when they should be held to a very stringent timeline of thirty days to cure any item that we have found them in default of? If they can't do it in this thirty-day period, then they don't care about the residents that pay their bills. Vote yes.
Manager Burt?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we can't have, thank you. Manager Burt?
First to start, I've been in a fair number of the apartments, there are many that are in pretty terrible shape. Oh, sorry. Hello? Just takes a bit to catch up. Okay, I've been in quite a few of the apartments, many of them very bad, I have mold allergies I walk in and skin instantly itching, some are more cosmetic, but, you know, certainly an issue I sympathize with. I had a question for Attorney Duggan. If, let's say it was set at thirty days, Eileen, and it did not make it in thirty days, I assume the town council would have the option then of either terminating or extending? Is that correct?
The town council would still have to act in accordance with the agreement, so it wouldn't simply be, you know, we can extend or not. They would have to examine the situation and find out and make a determination as to whether Related was diligently pursuing the cure, where were they in the process, and again, then decide whether or not it was capable of being completed within the cure period. So they'd have to go and make some analysis and findings, so.
I myself prefer the thirty days for a little extra pressure, but I can see it the other way.
Thank you.
I just have a question for Attorney Duggan. How, like, you said that it gets, is this some sort of negotiation? Like, there's a cure period that says at minimum thirty days? So who makes the decision of what it is, actually?
Well, I mean, I think at the outset, it's the town's decision, you know, to decide how long that's going to be, but certainly that can be the subject of a claim, of litigation, of an assertion that, you know, hey, wait a minute, we were diligently pursuing this, you didn't give us enough time, we were this far. So at the outset, it would be the town making that assertion, and then it could be subject to contention, et cetera. Certainly, could the town talk with them about it? Yes, I'm not sure how far that would go at this point.
Okay, so you're saying we set it, and then if they have a problem with it, they can contend, make some contention?
Right, well, I think it's, you know, the town has to assert the default, and then the minimum time, they could say, they have the right to a cure period, the minimum time is thirty days, but if at the end of that period, they're still diligently pursuing it, and you look at it and say, well, wait a minute, and I'm making this up for the moment, you know, X, Y, and Z subcontractors was incapable of them getting here to complete this work within this period of time, but they pursued it, you know, I think you'll look at it at that point and have to make a decision as to whether or not, you know, there's an entitlement to additional time under the agreement itself. So certainly, they could say, we can't do it in this time.
Okay, so just one last thing. So from my understanding, they get the tax payment on January 1st and July 1st. Is that correct?
It's when the taxes are due.
Half on January 1st, half on July 1st. So from my understanding, probably about eighty days from the end of the year, so as long as this number that we're putting is under eighty, then theoretically, if they don't cure in that time, they wouldn't benefit from the tax payment. Am I understanding correctly?
You know, again, I wouldn't want to say if they don't cure it in that time, that's the end of the ballgame, because you're not terminating the agreement here, you have to go back in again and make an analysis as to whether or not they're pursuing it and putting it together. I think if there's a termination within that timeframe, yeah, and I mean, I'm going to get into, I prefer not to get into the real legal advice part of it, I mean, I think there are issues as to whether or not that termination goes towards the tax bill, that's the taxes that are being laid, or the taxes that have been laid.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you for just explaining that to me. I can support thirty days. I really do think that, my understanding was that as long as this was sort of under eighty days, it was all the same, but if that's not necessarily the case, I do think that they've had all summer to make progress, and I don't feel like they have, so thirty days I can support.
Counsel Franco?
Thank you. In the first meeting that we had, I had asked what conditions would be a criteria for buildings being condemned, and I haven't received an answer for this. Does anybody have any idea?
Well, I think that's a strong item to say if buildings have been condemned, because that's not really the town's role in this, you know, the town doesn't have control over buildings, certainly could be, there'd be issues. I'll say where Legelite perhaps could say, hey, people can't live here, you need to move out.
And Steve, I think, is in the crowd.
Yeah, and likewise.
I asked him to be prepared on this, for that question.
Thank you.
And of course, the building department would be a different process if they found things.
I'm sorry, could you rephrase the question, please?
At our first meeting, I had questioned, what is the criteria to condemn a building with mold? And I haven't really received an answer to that.
So we don't condemn buildings either, Legelite Health District, we can deem a building unfit for human habitation, and generally, that's done when there are serious risks to the occupants of the home, coupled with an enforceable standard. For instance, we have deemed many units unfit for human habitation when there are children and toxic levels of lead paint. We also have in the past deemed a unit unfit for human habitation when those individuals responsible for the unit, the property owner or the management company, hasn't been responsive to our public health orders. So it is somewhat subjective if we're talking about mold, which I know that's one of the subjects here. If we go into a building and there's, let's say, twenty-five percent of the living room has mold on it, that's not normal. You shouldn't have that in a dwelling unit. But if you see small amounts of mold in the bathroom, on the trim, and so forth, like my bathroom at home, that's, wouldn't rise to the level of even a public health order. So we have to be subjective when we go into units and try and make a reasonable determination as to whether or not people's lives are at risk, and if they are health or life at risk, and if they are, is there an enforceable standard that we can use for enforcement?
And the results you've received so far?
Do you like me to generalize or give you numbers? How would you like that response?
However you'd like to respond.
I would say the majority of the units we've inspected have had conditions that were detrimental to the people who are living there, to the extent where we had to issue public health orders, the majority of them.
And what type of health orders?
They're called public health orders, they're a standard that's based on the Connecticut General Statutes and the Connecticut Public Health Code. The majority of them deal with mold. I believe there are a couple that deal with vermin, rodents, and chipping and peeling paint. I believe those are all three, but there may be others, because I haven't looked at every one today.
And how long did you give them to remedy the situation?
Thirty days.
Thirty days. And are you still receiving complaints?
Yes, we're actually going out into the community, we have four public health workers, outreach workers, who are going door-to-door and asking folks if they have any environmental issues that they'd like to report to us, and we've got a significant number of new complaints, I believe somewhere around sixteen.
And are you doing mold testing? Because I know that there's been an issue with how the testing is being conducted.
Yeah, no, we don't do testing, and we don't rely on the results of testing, because there is no applicable standard for mold in the state of Connecticut. So we wouldn't look at five hundred parts per million of any specific type of mold and say, that's a public health hazard, because the regulation simply doesn't exist, and we need regulations in order to issue public health orders or notices of unfit for human habitation.
Thank you. And Attorney Duggan, I have been, I had read something of HUD is potentially looking to find them, Branford Manor owners, in default as well, and something that concerns me is, is there a potential for them to have their Section Eight removed from that?
No, I honestly can't, I can't answer that question. To your first point, though, about HUD and what they were looking at in default, I think I probably saw the same thing, where HUD was saying, you know, we'd have to look at what the other local public health orders, et cetera, have been, and possibly base a default based on that. But I'm not familiar enough with their process to say that.
That was essentially what HUD told Mayor Hendrick and I in a couple of different calls, so it kind of mirrors ours, they have to give adequate time to cure it, that type of thing.
All right.
And just to add on that cure time, I apologize, with something that Steve mentioned a moment ago, with regard to the health orders, you know, one was issued on September 8th, and that's been extended, correct?
That's correct. We gave them till the end of October for that particular order, due in part to the fact that the unit is currently not being occupied, and there are stated difficulties in finding appropriate contractors to do the work, and the difficulties they're having scheduling appointments with tenants. So we weigh whether or not people's lives and health are currently at risk, and since no one is living in the unit, we gave it an extension till the end of October, and that's our standard practice.
Attorney Duggan, if we find them in default, what would our involvement be over the next, if we say thirty days? What would happen during those thirty days?
I think during those thirty days, that there would need to be some lines of communication so that you could understand whether or not they were going forward and taking care of the violations and coming into compliance, whether that would take the form of attorneys to attorneys, whether John and Keith Hendrick would still have access to Related's folks. I'm not exactly sure, but I think during that time, we would certainly want to be monitoring that to determine whether or not they were coming up into compliance, as well as during that timeframe, understanding whether or not there had been any new public health orders issued, any other violations deemed by the city, because that will kind of, you know, keep things going in a different direction.
And if we, if in thirty days, if we didn't give an extension, and there was a termination of this tax abatement, what would the council's involvement be, then?
The councils, well, the council would have to certainly decide on that termination, to render a decision based on the factors that are outlined in the contract. There'd have to be a decision, I think, to, you know, the mayor's point about, when does that go into effect? What is it effect for January? Is it backwards? Is it forwards? How does that go? Certainly, notice issues would have to be, you know, delegated to the town manager to issue, and then I would anticipate, although I can't be certain, I would anticipate that we would be involved in some sort of litigation with them.
And that's where the pressure to keep on, our responsibility as a town council, like, just say, to keep pressure on them to try and get things fixed, what, in your perception, that would be all done in executive session? Is that correct? Like, our...
I think with regard to the litigation aspect of it, certainly, I think we'd have to decide whether or not we could discuss whether or not there were ongoing issues that could be referenced, you know, like the public health orders, et cetera, in public, but much of it, I would anticipate, yes, would happen in executive session.
All right. And when these issues came forward, it was, I take it as my responsibility as a counselor to listen to the community and to hear the issues that they're having, which I took very seriously, and I thought they were absolutely horrendous, horrendous. But I also think it's, as a council, it's our duty to give, to document all of these things, to make sure Legelite Health District got involved and was getting the complaints and documenting everything that was happening that they could, and now that they're going door-to-door, and then, and trying to give some time for this to be corrected. And from what I've seen, it's just too slow, and people are suffering, they are suffering. And I'm in favor of holding them in default, and what I'm finding very surprising by some of the things that are happening on this council, is it seems to me, we're all on the same page. So I don't know why some of the arguments that are going on up here, and why some people seem to be like, sort of saying some things towards other counselors, that it's inappropriate, because from what I see, we're on the same page here. I think it's horrendous as well. I've also, like, and I'm just going to end with this, that I've heard other, I will wait my turn.
Thank you. Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, this is a question for you. Because mold has no standards, how do you figure out, I guess my question is, how do you figure out how to issue a public order on something that has no standards, and what kind of enforcement, or do you have any kind of enforcement on a unit that has little mold or excessive mold, or can you just explain how you...
It's a great question. So I believe it was the last, I'm sorry, the last committee of the whole meeting, I distributed a packet to all of the counselors. The Connecticut Department of Public Health puts out a number of guidance documents for local health districts and departments to use, to help inform that decision about when they should take regulatory action. And essentially, what we do is very similar to what the folks in this room did when they went to the apartments. We use our eyes, we use our ears, we use our noses, we try and determine if the level... I'm sorry. If the level of mold is visible mold, and mold that we can smell is excessive and beyond the norm, and would cause a reasonable person to perhaps have personal health issues because of it. Now, some people are not susceptible to mold at all. I've been in really moldy situations, and I've never felt anything. As Counselor Burt, and I believe one of the counselors said, they feel burning, they feel a whole bunch of symptoms. So it is subjective, again. So we make a determination when we go in, whether or not the mold that we see is due to lack of proper ventilation, maybe structural issues, poorly vented basement. So we kind of look at the whole picture and make a determination about whether it rises to the level of a public health order. I make the final determination, my organization, whether or not we issue those public health orders.
So can you just explain what a public health order is? I mean, what does it do?
Sure. In the state of Connecticut, whenever, I'll just use the Health District as an example, if we get a complaint, or we become aware of any situation that may be detrimental to public health, we're required, under 198206, to go out and do an investigation. If we determine that a public health nuisance exists, we can do a number of things. Most of the time, we can call the person who's responsible for that situation and say, hey, you have a situation that's a violation of whatever, 198206, or whatever it happens to be, and you have to fix it. When can you have it fixed by? And generally, people comply. The Health Department calls them and says, let's do this. If we don't think that's going to work, or if they're non-responsive, we generally move to a public health order. So it's a legal document that specifies exactly what portions of the Connecticut General Statute and the Public Health Code are in violation or being violated, and then we give them a specific timeframe for correction, and then tell them sometimes other steps that they need to do. For instance, we have to do a clearance inspection prior to reoccupancy or something like that. So once we issue it, ninety-nine percent of the time, they comply. If they don't, there are a number of things we can do. Under 198206, we can fine them, can I borrow your public health order? I believe it's two hundred and fifty dollars a day. Two hundred and fifty dollars a day for non-compliance, from the date that I specify that it needs to be corrected. We can also send it to the housing prosecutor, which we do frequently. We have folks who just won't respond to our public health orders, and we send it to the housing prosecutor, and it goes into the court system. I generally don't like to do that, because it slows things down. Things don't happen.
So have you, so in the Branford Manor cases, have you been issuing public health orders on specific units for them to clean up?
Yes. If you give me one second, I have that in an email right here. I can just give you a brief overview. So since the representative, the representing attorney for a number of property tenants reached out to us back in August, mid-August, we received twenty complaint reports. To date, we've issued sixteen public health orders to remediate public health nuisances, and nine additional orders are currently being drafted by my office.
And those are made basically... And those are made basically just on your judgment of what a healthy apartment or unit should be?
No, no. I would say my judgment is the smallest part of it. They're based largely on the Connecticut Public Health Code and violations. So 198206, that says very clearly, now I'm going to do it from memory, it says, in the opinion of the Director of Health, public health nuisances exist. So it is in statute that we use our judgment. We always like to be able to reference either a general statute or a section of the Connecticut Public Health Code.
Even on something as wishy-washy as mold levels and that kind of a thing?
Yeah, it's got, it has to be significant.
Sure.
I mean, we see honestly, almost every housing inspection I've ever been to, we've seen visible mold. It's everywhere. But does it rise to the level where we think it may constitute a public health issue? When I make that determination, that's when we issue the order.
Attorney Dugan, if we went to termination, do we lose, right now, we have sort of some ability to do, exert some pressure in some way. If we went to a termination, do we lose the ability to exert pressure?
I just, I just want to go back for one moment when Steve was talking about the public health orders and the 16 public health orders. Those are the subject of the motion that you have before you.
That's what, that's what it's based on.
That's what it's based on, as well as in the, the city rental, housing rental code violations. So it's very specific to look back on these, which we're saying Leglite has taken, examined, considered under the statutes and they've said, you have to remediate all these things. So those 16 are, were referenced in the statute in terms of going, excuse me, in the, in the default motion. In terms of going forward, if the, if the council moves forward and makes a determination that it's appropriate to terminate the agreement, in terms of what pressure there is, I mean, it's the pressure, I assume, of, you know, them not having access to the, to the tax abatement or incentive, but certainly it will also involve litigation. I mean, I, that's kind of an awareness that, you know, that that would, that would happen.
Other than us, other than they don't have the ability to sort of exercise half that extra money that they might get, there really isn't anything else that we can sort of do on them at that point?
That's what's provided, I mean, this is, the, the town actually is not, you know, doesn't have the same relationship as other parties might have. You know, the buildings in the city, Leglite has jurisdiction over the public health items. What this town and council have, you know, jurisdiction review of concerns the agreement, the tax incentive agreement. So we're looking at what's within that agreement.
And what, once we, once we do that, once we terminate, we sort of lose that ability to have pressure or exercise something over it?
I mean, hard, hard to say honestly because of the pressure's going to be, you've, you've ended the agreement, so, you know, is there going to be a litigation? Is there, will there be any give and take? What else could happen as a result?
Just, a question back to Steve again, on the 16 public health orders, are those done sort of in conjunction with the city's, the city's building inspector? Are they independent of it? Do you guys work together?
Uh, for scheduling purposes, we work together. But it's not required. It's, you know, at the convenience of the attorney representing the clients, the City of Groton Building Inspector and my staff. So we all work together to try to figure out a time where we can go unit by unit and not waste people's time.
Kind of a coordinated group as opposed to sort of, you're not going in separate paths.
That's correct. If I may comment on the question that you just asked, I'm not speaking to the agreement at all and what's before the council tonight, but whatever happens then, that would not preclude Leglite from doing its due diligence and we are required under law to continue to follow up regardless of any agreement that you may be considering tonight.
Okay. This is, I guess, a question for the town manager. I'm just a little concerned because we had a brand new motion that has 60 days in it and now you're in support of the 30-day. I'm wondering, how did we come up with the 60-day and why are we changing, other than Council Boardland's motion, that, should this have been 30 days instead of 60 days? I'm just wondering why we're suddenly changing something that we just got a few minutes ago.
Well, we've worked, Attorney Dugan and I have worked on it for the last couple of days, trying to be reasonable, to give them a reasonable amount of time, but that was sort of a starting point to see where the council was going with it. That's why I said I see a bolt ways, but I prefer the 30 days, but I did sign off on starting with 60 days.
You did sign off on that?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's, that was your starting point, but it was sort of like, just see where we are and we'll adjust from that, from that point?
I always assume, yeah, everything's going to change.
Okay. That's okay. I just wondered why we suddenly changed, changed track here. And I'm guessing, or just sort of your estimate, that no progress really, or very slow progress has been going on to this point in terms of things that we wanted, either from Leglite changes or town or city changes?
Right, from, yes, but yeah, especially from the Leglite point of view, from, not from their point of view, but from their notices.
Their notices. Okay. I guess, and one final question to Steve would be, in terms of the slowness of the progress, do you have a sense of what would have been reasonable to get some of these things done? I mean, you've worked with a lot of other buildings and units in different places. What would have been a reasonable amount of time that you would have expected some of the changes you wanted to have taken place?
So I'll do my best to answer that, but I'll, I want to clarify that I'm not talking about this issue in the aggregate. I'm talking about what Leglite Health District has responsibility for, when we became aware, when we received information about units, contact information, all that stuff. And then we schedule inspections, go out and verify there are nuisances, then we draft the public health orders. So as I mentioned before, August 18th was the date we received those orders. We subsequently issued the public health orders and of all the public health orders that we issued, 16 of them, nine have yet to be issued, but they will be issued. Only one is in, it's not in default because we've given an extension, as I mentioned. So they're complying with everything we've asked them to do from this point forward. I'm not going any further than that statement about what Leglite has asked them to do. One out of those public health orders, they asked for an extension. The other ones haven't reached that deadline yet.
They haven't reached, they haven't reached deadline yet, but they're moving along in a schedule that you would, you would say is acceptable?
No, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know, we don't know what they're doing step by step to comply with the public health orders. So for instance, one of these, I believe it's the one that they asked for an extension on, we actually ordered them to remove a large section of sheet rock from inside the unit. That will take a lot longer than some other more simple fixes like replacing a ventilation fan or something like that. So some will be pretty labor intensive, others will be pretty quick and easy.
Just for reference point, that initial public health order that Steve's referencing was issued on September 8th. Then there were a series issued on September 15th and a series issued on October 22nd. And with each of those, there were 30 days provided by Leglite for completion. So that 15th, October 15th is coming up more quickly.
But they all have their own timeframe.
Right, but they were, the orders were issued in chunks, so a chunk were issued on the 15th, or coming up on the 15th and a chunk will come up on the 22nd.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council Casseri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, our agenda item is Brantford Manor and the Tax Incentive Agreement. This has never been about the believability of these stories shared by the residents of Brantford Manor. I certainly have always believed you, your stories, your testimonies and your struggles for your time living in these conditions. I am a mother and I understand wanting safety for your children. This has been about our role as a town counselor, making sure we are fulfilling our duties legally, ethically and by the book, because whether we like it or not, the Town of Groton has entered into a legally binding agreement and we, as your elected officials, need to ensure we are taking the proper precautions necessary, necessary to make sure that we are making the very best decisions for you and your families. We need to make sure we're doing our due diligence to protect you. Mr. Burt, these questions are probably going to be mostly directed for you. Mr. Burt, as of an email dated October 5th, 436 apartments had been inspected for mold growth by Hetty. Do you believe this to be accurate?
I believe that they probably inspected them, yes.
Okay. Out of 436 inspections, only 117 reports had been completed. 60 out of those 117 reports indicated some mold remediation is necessary. Do you believe this to be accurate?
Likely though, you know, the Leglite, when they get in there, could have different opinions from that.
Right. All of this is coming from Brantford Manor Preservation, okay. Why are there only 117 reports prepared when 436 apartments were inspected? Do you have any idea?
Only they said it's just taken them quite a while. It's a lot of work.
That seemed very minimal. Out of those 60 suspected mold remediation requirements, only six apartments were ready for final clearance of remediation by Hetty. Is this number still accurate?
I can't say for sure. I wouldn't be surprised to see a couple more, but I can't say.
Okay. Out of the 436 apartments inspected, Brantford Manor Preservation believes that only 90 to 100 of those apartments will need some level of mold remediation. With the stories, testimonies, photographic evidence and complaints to Leglite Health District, are we confident that this estimate is only about 23% of units needing to be remediated?
I'd be pretty surprised if it was that low.
Microphone, please.
Sorry. I'd be pretty surprised if it was actually only that number.
Uh, Mr. Mansfield, is there anything you can weigh on that?
Uh, I, I can only comment on those that we've inspected and as I mentioned, the majority have some public health issues.
Five households are currently relocated off-site. What is the status of those five relocated apartments?
Still in hotels as of Friday. I haven't had an update since then, but I believe they're still in hotels.
Okay. Is Brantford Manor Preservation attempting everything that they can to ensure that residents are in a safe living situation until their apartments are remediated?
Well, I think the concern, like, the immediate concern was the threat of cutting off hotel payments last week. They've extended for one week, but they're going to be still in that precarious position at the end of this week. So then, you know, all, all bets are off because, you know, according to the tenants, they don't feel the remediation is adequate to return.
Is Brantford Manor Preservation committing to setting action plans or timelines to ensure remediation is done efficiently and swiftly?
Uh, that's been the biggest frustration, I would say, for, I don't want to speak for Mayor Hendrick, but I know he's said that several times, that we haven't been able to get an actual timeline. You know, we need a timeline.
Right.
And that's, that's kind of my biggest goal out of this is to, I'm hoping this would spur, you know, a realistic timeline.
Okay. So they have not really committed to any timelines?
Correct.
Okay. Since remediation has begun, has communication slowed between the city, town, Leglite Health District or any other authoritative overseers of Brantford Manor Preservation and Brantford Manor Preservation?
Our communication has been good between the city, the town and Related. In our meetings with HUD, HUD seems to be a couple of weeks behind our information. They, they've said nothing goes, not much goes in writing anymore, once there was attorneys involved, so I wouldn't be shocked to see that. I think in default, the communication will probably still go, you know, we'll see, I've got a meeting scheduled tomorrow. But, you know, it can be a little, little harmful potentially.
Okay. And the information about Brantford Manor came to this council in June and this council set guidelines with Attorney Dugan present. Do we feel that it's fair to say Brantford has not met those guidelines?
Uh, yeah, of course, some of those things don't necessarily fall, it was our request and they said they would work with us at that June meeting. And, no, I do not feel that. Some of them, yes, but I think there's many not, that have not been met.
Okay.
But again, those aren't the same as what you would put in default, so.
Understood. Attorney Dugan, do you foresee any issues with us going from 60 days to 30 days in your legal opinion?
As long as the council complies with the contract as it moves forward, the contract allows for it to be a 30-day, not less than 30 days, but just mindful of the fact that still have to take into consideration whether or not they're diligently pursuing it and they can actually complete what they need to complete within that timeframe and/or thereafter.
Okay. I will also be in favor of supporting this motion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Boardland?
Um, thank you. My question is to the Leglite Health District. It was stated that several years ago, there was complaints. Is that true regarding mold?
Uh, I don't know about, I know there were complaints historically, but I couldn't put a timeframe on it.
Right. Well, I'll put a timeframe on it then. A year ago, I know for a fact, there were two people moved out of 155 and I forget the number, one of the neighbors. They were placed in a hotel and I spoke before this council as to asking for human resources support for them at the food pantry. I contacted the town manager and said that these people were being moved out due to complaints of mold. So historically, this place has had mold. It's, it's in the records in the city that it, there was a halt of remediation five years ago under construction. There was wall-to-wall mold. And then a year after construction, in the same unit of 155, when they took down those cabinets, black mold from ceiling to floor, just about, large amounts of mold. I'm concerned that we say we can't see it. There's a lot of things we can't see that are there. I'm concerned that if you can't see it, it doesn't mean it doesn't exist. What they do is they paint over it and then it comes through after the people there about a year. So just because you don't see it, my question is to the Leglite Health District, have you ever asked them to open up a piece of the wall?
No.
Isn't that in your preview to do such?
No.
Why not?
Because we don't have evidence that there, we don't ask people to do destructive testing to determine if something exists. We don't have the authority to, to tell them to destroy an apartment, for instance, looking for something. It very well may be behind the wall. We don't know that.
Very well. You don't have to ask them to destruct, but it could be guidance and I've seen places where they've taken the wood paneling down and just opened up a little piece and put it back. There's ways to do such. My concern is tonight, we're speaking about how much time this company that's billions of dollars needs to make sure that they don't feel rushed. That shouldn't be our determination and when scaling the magnitude and destruction that these families have been through. Five years ago, billions of dollars went into this unit. Some council that was up here made this great idea of a tax agreement, abatement agreement, and the city and the town have not upheld that agreement. There's no documentation of checks. We talk about mold. Let's go a step further. Has the social services been put in place? No. Has the support helping when people find permanent housing? No. Have other structures been in place? So it's not just the mold and the repairs, it's services. When you read the tax abatement agreement and you look at the meeting when Related came in five years ago as a superhero to take over this property, it says for quality health to improve the welfare and well-being of the tenants. And to sit here and say, ah, you know, we want to give them enough time. They've had the time. We've given them the time. There's documentations of mold in 2018. I have the list up here. Go to the city, it's down in the basement. There's documentations. I'm concerned, I've called the criminal prosecutor at the state level. I said, have any reports been filed on behalf of the tenants there? They said, no. My question is why? It's already at a criminal level. It's been five years. Where did the money go? There's no way the repairs and the number of repairs are being requested, that money was spent accordingly to the structured well-being of the tenants. So how can we sit here? They've had the time. Five years. If you did that much remediation in five years, your place would be this deplorable.
Thank you.
Where does the money go? Where?
Thank you.
They painted the walls and colored it up and Leglite can't see it.
Thank you.
That's where it's at, behind the walls.
May I have a moment to respond to?
Sure.
Council Boardland? Uh, we don't order them to paint walls, we order them to remove any porous surfaces and destroy them and replace them. So it won't be adequate if their level of remediation doesn't meet the standards that we put forth in our order. Just a clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Council McBride?
Thank you. I'm in full support of the 30 days as well. Excuse me, I just have a couple, a couple of questions. When, when we spoke in June and August, we talked about a listing of all the issues that we had. And I know Steve, in August, you gave us a listing of all the items that you had, you were working on as well. My concern or question is more, we're addressing the 16 issues that are clear issues, clear violations. Do we have a listing of all of the other matters as well? Because my concern is that although these, these 16 items have to be fixed, they may be able to fix these issues in 30 days, but there's so many other issues that are still, that still may be wrong. I mean, the, the agreement stated, as I stated previously, they're supposed to provide high-quality, low-income, limited housing. And then it states in the agreement, will at all times maintain the project in good order and repair and manage and operate the project in accordance with the provisions of all applicable federal, state, local law in this agreement. So my concern is not, I mean, I'm happy that we're going forward with this 16, these 16 issues, but I think there may be a bigger issue. So I want to make sure we're setting ourselves up for when they do come back and they fix these 16 issues, what's next if they're gonna be in default, in what I would consider default, on all these other matters? You know, a lot of the repairs and stuff, that's the major one. But are there other issues that are out there that we are at least lining up so when we approach the default in a month or two on other matters? Are we, are we in a good position legally that we're protecting ourselves?
So I think there are a couple of things with that. One reason to look at specifically the public health orders and the rental code violation orders are those are specific, objective, third-party, you can look at them, you don't have to rely on really your own subjectivity in dealing with those. You're looking at these and saying, hey, these are, you know, these are the professionals, the experts, this is what they found, this is what they do. And then what Steve mentioned earlier, too, is that there are, while there are 16 violations, when you read those public health orders, you'll see that there are typically multiple issues going on in the public health order that have to be taken care of. In addition, he indicated that there were nine more that were going to be issued, and that there were still inspections, et cetera, that were ongoing. Likewise, on the city health side, there are a number of violations on the rental code side. Likewise, those inspections, et cetera, are still ongoing. So I think by the time that that 30 days ends, you'll have a good idea as to whether or not they're actually taking care of things, or able to take care of things going forward. Because my gut is that you'll see more public health orders and more city orders related to the rental code violations. With the other issues, when we say good order and repair, I think you could say that these are one way, that they're failing to carry up, uphold their burden of keeping things in good repair and order. The concern, you know, as I look at that, maybe, at least at this juncture, we're not precluded, the council isn't precluded, from looking at all these other things as we go forward. But that brings in some subjectivity to it at this point, which, for the stage that you're at right now, and raising the default, and wanting to be certain that you're comfortable with these items, it seems most reasonable to rely on, you know, the orders that have been issued that are out there.
Okay, thank you. So you're going, you're applying the most concrete situations that you have for the case.
Correct.
And just to clarify, so there's nine more additional that may come about and add to that 16 totals?
That will come about.
It will.
So they're just legal documents, they take a while to do.
And the inspections haven't all been completed, so there could be, very well be more, and likely more.
So I guess my question would be, could this council consider a motion now or in the future to say that any future item, such as the 16, let's say nine more come, they have 30 days to fix those in addition to the 16? I mean, why should we wait until we have another council meeting to fix? Let's say you come across with these nine next week. Shouldn't they have 30 days from the determination of, that you've declared them uninhabitable or whatever it may be, that they should have 30 days to fix those as well? Instead of waiting every time we have a council meeting, we just set the path that within 30 days after you declare it uninhabitable, or whatever the proper term is, they have to remedy it in 30 days?
Well, she'll say, the resolution's actually written that as more come up, I can expand the default to add those in.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Okay, I'm all set. Thank you.
Counselor Casseri?
Attorney Duggan, when you are in a legally binding contract, do you think it's fair to say that we need evidence, timelines, proof of failure to meet those timelines, and documentation that elements of the contract hasn't been met in order to justify a default?
Sure, and I think that's what the attempt is, by specifically relying on these orders.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, thank you. Just reading through the draft motion, obviously, you know, this, the default is predicated on the due diligence done by Ledge Light Health District, and I would argue the proactive due diligence, especially since, you know, we've, as a council, has deliberated on these issues, specifically signing the specific number of public health orders you have declared. So my question is, we have a very important player missing from this discussion, it's a representative of the City of Groton. I understand the city council is meeting. However, I believe at no point has this council ever received any communication from the building official, an appointed official by the mayor of the City of Groton. So my question to the town manager is, it was actually perhaps more appropriate to both of, the town manager and Ledge Light Health District, is mold a city health, or I'm sorry, a city code violation?
I don't believe so.
I don't know. I'm not familiar with the city ordinances.
They didn't call it out in their notices, though. I don't believe so.
Okay, and as far as, and I was just reading through the rental housing code, a very comprehensive document that was drafted in, kind of in the heyday, the high point of the City of Groton, at a time when Mayor Kolnasky was at the helm. And it's a very comprehensive document, just going over health and safety hazards, kind of in all aspects of the home. But my question kind of falls on the lines of, again, the building officials' role in determining violations, whether it be rental housing, whether it be sort of buying quarterly construction reports, which the town of Groton never received, apparently the City of Groton never received. We signed off on this tax stabilization agreement, you know, knowing that, and we, I wasn't on this council, and, you know, certainly nobody on this, part of this council voted on the tax stabilization agreement almost, you know, six, six years, five, six years ago. But how, how is it that we signed off on the tax agreement without receiving those quarterly construction reports?
During the process, I'd say the city building inspector went there regularly. And there's a report out there as to what kind of led to this current, you know, this mold issue doesn't mean it's the exact same as the old mold issue on all of them. There's a report that details why they think it got to this point, and some solutions, potentially. But they did regularly, and they stopped some work at times when they found it wasn't being done correctly. They have, you know, they have proof of all the money was spent. And then they, of course, issued, you know, the orders at the end, but they were there, like I said, regularly checking, regularly going into those units as they're, we have, you know, like I said, the information I sent to the council before that shows what they spent the money on, you know, this many fans, this many, you know, and that's another issue, you know, their fans were undersized, there was just, you know, several things that were pro code, but might not have been the best way to do it, so.
And how, how could the city sign off on the, you know, the project without receiving, again, receiving those reports, just, and knowing how bad those mold issues were, so?
All that would have done was break up that final report. It just, they would have just said how much they've spent, basically, that's all it would have been. Oh, sorry, it wouldn't have been, you know, anymore. Obviously, you run along the way, but once you're past that, then the final report covers what would have been in those quarterly reports.
All right. And it was my understanding from, from these conversations, Mayor Hedrick opposed default. Do we know if the city will be moving in the direction of supporting the town's position to?
I think it's likely. I, of course, would never speak for the city council, but I believe it's likely, and I, and that they will recommend it.
All right.
Unless I heard Mayor Hedrick was in favor also.
And do you know when the council is expected, the city council is expected to take up that?
Depends if they wait till their regular next meeting, or do they do it under, there's, there is some discussion of whether to have a special meeting earlier, maybe next week.
Well, certainly if Mayor Hedrick needs any convincing, and certainly the council invite them to a joint meeting, and hopefully, if there's any questions, we can meet jointly to discuss their, their share of the bargain as well.
Thank you.
I will just state briefly that Mayor Hedrick is on record supporting the default.
Of course, the letter, yeah, the press release, yeah.
I was just speaking on our previous meetings we've had.
Right, yes. The mayor of the city, town, and the town manager jointly put out a press release, all supporting the default.
Counselor McBride?
Thank you. Just one follow-up on the last item. There's over 400 units, and there's 16 that are gonna, we're gonna have concerns with, and more after that. So I guess my question is, do we have that listing of all of the items? Because my concern is, if you fast-forward, what if the developer says, I'm gonna, I just won't need 16 percent of 432 tax abatement? So I'm just, what I'm trying to say is, do we have that complete listing of everything that's wrong with all these units?
We have copies of all the notices, and I think I've sent most of them to the council as they came out, but I certainly resend them, and we could actually put them, you know, online with, with the agenda pack.
Okay, so we have a complete listing of every, every issue that we know.
That we've.
Excellent, thank you.
We've had two rounds of speaking. Is there consensus?
I have spoken my second time.
Okay, Counselor Franco?
Point of clarification, I spoke to my motion, and I spoke once.
Counselor Franco, you have the floor.
Thank you. I also wanted to disclose that there was, I have a slight relationship with Attorney R. Scott that represents the residents of Branford Manor. Approximately, I, give or take, a year and a half ago, I had reached out to her for some illegal advice regarding my father on a medical issue, and she gave me a legal referral to Florida. So I just want to put that on the record for, you know, like a duty to disclose. And until this issue, I really haven't had any contact with her. So I just wanted to put that on the record. But as my second time talking, I would like to state that, that you, as a council, we had to ask residents to make complaints. It has to be documented. We have to have things in documentation, and then some kind of, you had to give them some time. I mean, when this comes to us, maybe in June, and it's now October, I mean, it's like five months. So by the time complaints started getting into Ledge Light, and then, you know, giving them a little bit of, giving them time to try and correct this, and to see that they didn't do, in my eyes, they weren't speedy enough. They didn't come back with a list of stating what they, when they were gonna get these things done. I mean, these are issues. And I also have, like, as I stated when I first spoke, I have very big concerns about if this mold is that much out of control. And it does concern me if it is behind the walls. And from what I'm understanding, it potentially could be if it's coming out of electrical sockets. These are things that do concern me, and to hear Ledge Light say that they don't ask them to, to remove walls so they could see what was behind them. I mean, I'm hearing that there's issues within the walls, and if that is spreading, and it's spreading within units, I'm very, very concerned about the potential and the possibility of HUD finding them in default as well, giving them time to remediate. But it just, I'm trying to figure out in my head, how bad is this? Like, how bad are they going to be condemned? Is their Section 8 gonna be removed? Because this scares me. This scares me a lot. And it scares me of where these people are going to live if this potentially happens. I mean, everybody could be upset and say, we should have done things faster, we've given them all this time. I mean, I'm hearing this here at the council, we should have done this a long time ago, back in May. I demanded that we find them in default. But the thing is, where are these people gonna go if we don't give these people some time to fix this? And what if they don't fix it? What is gonna happen to these people? I am like, truly scared for them. So with that, I support the people of Branford Manor. Nobody should live in horrible conditions like this. But also, we need to think of, like, how are we gonna actually solve this? What is the, what is the real solution forward? And so far, I haven't heard one. I really haven't heard one.
Thank you. We have had two rounds of speaking. Is there consensus from the council for third round?
I just want a clarification, are you counting my response to my motion?
Yes.
That's never been counted before.
It has absolutely always been counted as one.
No, you can come and speak up here?
Yeah. Just clarifying question, just in terms of process, if I'm not mistaken, when someone makes a motion, always, that does not count towards their.
Yes, okay, hold on. We have our rules chair right here. It is always count, they have the, they have the privilege of speaking first, that's why you have, you speak to your motion, but that absolutely has always counted as one round of speaking. Okay. Seeing no consensus to continue debate, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have his hand up.
I called for the vote already. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The amendment, right?
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions?
You're voting against the Branford Manor.
I'm just, I speak again, because he's doing it so fast, and he's rushing, I'm not understanding. So what are we voting on? Can you clarify?
We're voting on the amendment. That is eight in favor, one opposed, Boardland, zero abstaining.
I'm, I would like a second to understand what you said directly is.
Eight voted in favor of the amendment, one voted against, Boardland, and zero abstaining.
No, I'm for the amendment if I'm the one that put the amendment on the floor.
Okay, but when I asked for opposed, you said aye.
I thought it was amendment to speak again. I was confused as to what you stated. How about you grant people some graces, you know what I mean?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Now, we are voting on the motion as amended, so it's the whole agreement as amendment, just changing the 30 to the 60. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Okay, so now we have to.
Make a motion to recess to the town council meeting?
Whoa, 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 he's rushing it through. That's not correct. I'm not gonna stand here and do this.
Okay, we just voted on the amendment.
I did not vote. I'm asking for a clarification.
Okay.
You just said the wording wrong. Yeah, he did.
Okay.
Mayor, mayor?
Counselor Parker?
Okay. What he did was ask to move, go ahead and move forward with the question, move the question, basically, is what he did. But he didn't phrase it correctly.
I asked him to go back and start over.
Can I finish speaking? I have the floor, thank you. So what he was asking for was to go ahead and move the question. He already asked if you could have the third time to speak. Nobody said anything. Then he said he wants to move the question. He moved the question. So that means, yes, we were in favor of moving the question, then we went to vote on your amendment.
That's not how I voted. I would like to start over.
Okay. The council is gonna stand in recess. We have to adjourn our council meeting. So we are recessed at 8:02.
I would like to go back to that vote, please.
We are in recess at 8:02.
A call to order the Tuesday, October 11, 2022. Town Council's special meeting to order at 8:21. All councils are present, therefore we have a quorum. Onto new business. Councilor Baumgartner.
Resolution. Whereas in April and May 2017, the Town of Groton, City of Groton, and Branford Manor Preservation Limited Partnership executed a real property tax incentive agreement for the improvement and operation of a low-income subsidized rental housing complex, namely Branford Manor. Whereas B2G of the agreement requires that the developer, i.e. Branford Manor Preservation Limited Partnership, by itself and/or through the management company at all times maintain the project, i.e. Branford Manor, in good order and repair, and manage and operate the project in accordance with provisions of all applicable federal, state, and local law and this agreement. Whereas since on or about September 8, 2022, Legelite Health District has issued at least 16 public health orders attached identifying violations of the State Public Health Code at Branford Manor, which to date have not all been cured, and Legelite is continuing to address complaints and inspect the premises for potential additional violation of the State Public Health Code. And whereas since on or about September 26, 2022, the City of Groton has issued numerous violations of its rental housing code at Branford Manor, which to date have not all been cured, and the city continues to address complaints and inspect the premises for potential additional violations of the rental housing code. Whereas default under paragraph B7A2 is subject to a cure period of not less than 30 days, as set forth in paragraph B7C. And whereas the Town Council, in consideration of the available information, resolves to find Branford Manor Preservation Limited Partnership in default of the agreement pursuant to paragraphs B2, G, B7A2, and any other relevant paragraphs of the agreement. This action is taken without prejudice to the town's ability in the future to modify the reasons and/or support for, or lack of reasons, and/or support for any ongoing default through addition, modification, or withdrawal of reasons and/or support for. To provide Branford Manor Preservation Limited Partnership with 30-day cure period, beginning from the compliance dates set forth by the city and/or Legelite Health District, as those compliance dates may be amended from time to time. In the event of further notices of violation from the rental housing code and/or public health code, the Town Manager may amend, if necessary, the default reason, support for, and cure periods consistent with the agreement. To authorize the Town Manager to execute any documents to notify Branford Manor Preservation Limited Partnership of the council's decisions to find it in default, to set the cure periods outlined above, and to state that the council retains its right, upon review of the status of the default at the end of the cure periods, as those periods may be amended from time to time, to terminate the agreement effective at the end of that cure period in accordance with the terms of the agreement.
Second.
So moved.
Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Melendez. Councilor Borlon.
Thank you. I just want to double confirm on the record for the attorney that this is a proper, well-drafted agreement that is going to have what we need in it to do the first steps here of the 30 days. My other question is, if new defaults come out tomorrow, do they all fall under the same 30-day? The ticker starts new for each of them? Or is it 30 days for everything?
No, just for the new ones, not for the old ones. Nothing changes the timeline unless this council decides to do something.
I guess I'm not understanding, could you clarify?
The ones that you're putting in default tonight, for the current motion, for the current notices, nothing will change those timelines unless this council itself decides to want to get more time. But anything new will be a new thing, and it'll get that 30 days. Because it can be 30 days from now when we get the next notice or... You have to give 30 days per title.
So we'll be having to revisit this many times, it seems? As he just stated, there's nine more to come.
No, no, I'll just put those right into the default.
So we'll have to have someone tracking where the 30 days on each chunk is? So you'll send us updates as those are, what they start and end dates? And it's also my understanding, is it true that we can put the city in default as well? Is that correct, per the?
We have no standing to put the city in default.
All right, no further questions.
Thank you. Councilor Westervelt.
I just wanted to state my support for this motion, and I also wanted to express my own concerns. I have some reservations, not with respect to the resolution. However, long-term, thinking about the folks at Branford Manor and how this is going to affect them in the long run. Obviously, we have to be concerned because HUD is a federal program, and we don't have any, we have really nothing to do with HUD, except that we can ask them for updates and ask them for help. But I'm concerned where, with finding them in default long-term, how that's going to affect the Section 8 housing and everything else. But I am fully in support of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Borlon.
In reference to this, I think this, as it's been stated, puts the onus on the Town of Groton and the council to come, and the current council, to move forward with expanding our low-income housing. We definitely have a lack of resources, and so the way we fix that is this council comes up with a plan to make sure that we implement new affordable housing in the Town of Groton, so folks are not trapped in one subdivision only. So I will stand with that and speak up, because that has been something all along. There's not enough here, and there's nowhere else to go. So I do think that that should be after this, another agenda item that I will put a referral in to make sure that we are looking at that. This has been something that's been overlooked for a long time. Thank you.
Councilor Baumgartner.
Yes, on that wavelength, just like our plan of conservation and development serves as our town's blueprint as to how we properly develop our community, I think sometimes we may have run astray from that. But I do believe that this council, you know, a couple months ago, we voted to accept the Affordable Housing Plan for the Town of Groton. And we asked, no shortage of questions, that's for sure, in various meetings, and really up until the deadline. We finally passed a document that I think reflected some of our calls for improving affordable housing stock that we have in Groton. It goes without stating that we've done a great disservice to too many of our community members, especially given the deplorable conditions at Branford Manor for so long. So it is my hope that moving forward, we can begin to take steps to adopt and implement some of those recommendations that were outlined in that Affordable Housing Plan as well. And certainly, you know, as it pertains to establishing a fund to provide relief and assistance to some of the families, all of the families that are impacted by these deplorable conditions at Branford Manor. And there already is a blueprint as to how to go about that in the Affordable Housing Plan. So I'd implore council members to review that plan, and, you know, and hope we can perhaps have a meeting in the near future to discuss, you know, how we can implement some of these strategies in the near term, so we can have a direct impact on our Branford Manor families. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other hands. I'll call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Thank you.
Onto recognitions, awards, and memorials. Proclamation recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month, Councilor Borlon.
Thank you. A proclamation recognizing National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas while considerable progress has been made in the fight against breast cancer, it remains as the most frequently diagnosed type of non-skin cancer and the second-leading cause of cancer deaths among women in our country. And whereas unfortunately, many of us know someone or have had family members who have or have had cancer, whereas that, whereas thanks to early detection and better treatments, mortality rates for breast cancer have greatly decreased in the last decade. And whereas knowing what may contribute to breast cancer, symptoms, diagnosis, and treatment are important parts of prevention. And whereas having affordable access to screening and early detection for all women is an essential component in the fight against breast cancer. And whereas during National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we stand with our mothers, our daughters, our sisters, our aunts, our friends, and I also will say men, because it does affect men as well. We recognize all who have joined their loved ones in fighting their battle, as well as the advocates, researchers, healthcare providers, who care and the hard work gives hope to those living with breast cancer. And whereas by educating ourselves and supporting innovative research, we will improve the quality of life of all Americans affected by breast cancer. One day, defeat this terrible disease. Now there be it resolved that the Groton Town Council does hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and urge fellow citizens to become aware of the important breast cancer, become aware of the importance that breast cancer has on our community, and support the fight against breast cancer so that we may someday defeat this terrible disease.
Thank you. Onto Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. Proclamation recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas September 15 is the anniversary of independence for six Latin American countries: Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, and Mexico. All gained independence from Spain on September 15, 1821, and Chile achieved independence on September 18, 1810. And whereas in 1988, President Ronald Reagan passed a law designating September 15 through October 15 of each year as National Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas Hispanic Americans have contributed a rich cultural heritage representing many countries' ethnicities and religious traditions, which has had a profound influence on our country through their strong commitments of family, faith, and hard work. And whereas the Town of Groton recognizes and honors contributions of all Hispanic members of our community and celebrates the culture and traditions of Spanish-speaking residents who traced their roots to Spain, Mexico, Central America, South America, and the Caribbean. And whereas the Groton Town Council invites all members of the community to celebrate 2022 Hispanic Heritage Month with the theme of Unidos, inclusivity for a stronger nation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Groton Town Council hereby proclaim September 15 to October 15, 2022 to be Hispanic Heritage Month. Signed, Mayor Juan Melendez, the Town of Groton. Onto proclamation Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Councilor Parker.
Proclamation recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas one in every four women and nearly one in 10 men will experience domestic violence during their lifetime. And whereas the victims should be provided support services, compassion, and the healing they need during this time. And domestic abusers should be punished to the full extent of the law. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole here in this community, throughout the United States and the world. And whereas the Town of Groton recognizes the important work done by survivors, domestic violence programs, and victim services providers. And whereas the President of the United States and Congress, as well as other federal agencies, have expressed a commitment to eliminating domestic violence, both nationally and internationally. Now therefore be it resolved that the Groton Town Council proclaims October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in recognition of the important work done by domestic violence programs and victim service providers, and urges all citizens to actively participate in any scheduled activities and programs sponsored by Safe Futures, Women's Center of Southeastern Connecticut, the Connecticut Coalition Against Domestic Violence, and other community organizations to work toward elimination of partner abuse. Signed by the mayor, Juan Melendez.
Thank you. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn, but we are not done. We're just adjourning our council. So a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Parker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are adjourned at 8:35. And we'll bring our committee, the whole meeting, back from recess at 8:35. Onto Mystic Education Center Development Agreement. Councilor Westervelt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to continue immediately with the mediation process required by the development agreement, and the Town Manager is authorized, in consultation with the Town Attorney, upon conclusion of the mediation, to take such appropriate measures as are allowed by such contract, including termination.
Second, Borlon.
Moved by Westervelt, seconded by Borlon. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto pending claims and/or litigation by former employee.
I'm just going to have a few minutes before she can get here.
Okay, so recess?
For five minutes.
Okay. Five-minute recess, we'll be back at 8:41. We're back from recess at 8:45, and onto pending claims and/or litigation by former employee. I hereby move...
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Before we go into executive session, I need to disclose that I previously worked with a family member of the complainant...
Recording stopped.
And the complainant's attorney was once my supervisor at a department I worked for.
Recording in progress.
I've had no contact with these individuals for over a decade, so therefore I'm only disclosing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Borlon.
I think it'd be important to talk to what we can from the last meeting on the record before going in, like we've done with other executive sessions.
Is there any?
I would leave that to what Eileen thinks could be said, because being a legal matter, I'm not going to talk about it in open session.
Regarding this?
Yeah.
No, at this point, I would suggest there'd be a motion to go into executive session.
But wouldn't it be fair to say, like, you know, based on that there's some type of litigation, what's like, what can you say?
It's our attorney's opinion that there's nothing you can say at this time.
There's nothing at all you can say on the record?
That's correct.
Pending litigation.
No background, or how long ago, nothing?
Not at this point. I'd say that maybe after the executive session.
Thank you.
All right.
I hereby move that the members of the... I hereby move that the members of the Town Council Committee, the whole, Town Manager John Burt, Police Chief Luis Fasaro, Deputy Chief Paul Gateley, Lieutenant JB, Captain Greg McCarthy, Human Resources Director Arneisha Green, and Town Attorney Eileen Duggan go into executive session pursuant to general statutes, Section 1-200 6B for the purpose of discussing strategy and negotiations related to pending litigation and/or pending claims concerning pending claims and/or litigation by a former employee regarding employment, separation from employment, and pension eligibility. So move. Second. Moved by Melendez, seconded by Westerville. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Carry seven. In favor to oppose, Bortol, Bumgarner, zero abstentions. We're in executive session.
We're out of the executive session at 9:44. I just want to note that Councilor Parker left just before the executive session. Councilor Franco left during the executive session. Motion to adjourn.
Second, Jones.
I'm Melendez, seconded by Jones. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We're adjourned at 9:45 unanimously.